All right. Good evening, folks, and thank you for viewing the June 21st meeting of the Arcata City Council. The City Council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. Our first item on the agenda this evening is a land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning "over in the woods or among the redwoods." Past action by local, state, and federal governments have removed the Wiat and other indigenous people from their land and have threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. So if you'd like to join us, please stand for the flag slit. Will the city clerk please call the roll? Mayor Schaefer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Stillman?
Here.
All present. So if you wish to make a comment during our meeting this evening, either during the two open public comment periods or as an individual agenda item, there are three ways to do so. So if you're here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you'd like to speak on is accepting public comment. And just a reminder for our early oral communications, which will take place after our ceremonial matters, we are utilizing our card system, so we'll take the first four in here and we'll check back with online and then we'll come back. We usually take about seven or eight commenters for that 15-minute time period. So if you're here in person, again, line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting comment. If you're logged onto Zoom, click Raise Your Hand. And if you're on your phone, please press star nine on your phone and that will raise your hand. For each item, we will take in-person public comment first and then move to online comments. And we will not be going back and forth, so if you want to comment, line up at the podium or raise your electronic hand as soon as comment is requested for that item. All right, that takes us into ceremonial matters. So our first matter under ceremonial this evening is a certificate of appreciation for Christian Figueroa for his three years of service on the Arcata Planning Commission. And this will be read by Councilmember White and former colleague of the Planning Commission. Again, Councilmember White, take it away.
All right. So yes, this is for Christian Figueroa for his three years of service to the City of Arcata, whereas Christian Figueroa served Arcata for just over three years on the Planning Commission, having been appointed on March 4th, 2020. And whereas Christian's broad technical knowledge was always a resource for the Commission and the community. And whereas Christian contributed to the Commission's deliberations with respect and thoughtfulness. And whereas Christian was dedicated to the community and the planning process. And whereas we appreciate all he gave back to this community and he will be missed. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby expresses its appreciation to Christian Figueroa for serving the people of Arcata for three years. We wish him all the best and commemorate his release from duty as of May 10th, 2023, dated June 1st, 2023, by Mayor Sarah Schaefer.
And Christian, if you'd like to say any words, you are more than welcome to, or just shake a hand and get a certificate. But thank you for all of your service.
Yes, thanks a bunch for commemorating me, for my service. It's been a pleasure working with staff. It's been a pleasure working with my fellow commissioners, I've got one right over here. And yes, and working with City Council as well. And I feel comfortable saying that not only with this council and with the Commission that, you know, we have a bright future and also, you know, with the support of staff. So thank you very much and y'all have a great evening. Take care.
Thank you, Christian. All right. Our next ceremonial matter is a proclamation and recognition of the Fourth of July Jubilee, July 4th, 2023, and this will be read by Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Whereas the City of Arcata, known for its vibrant community spirit and commitment to fostering local businesses, recognizes the importance of celebrating our nation's independence and contributions of our local commerce. And whereas the Arcata Chamber of Commerce has organized a grand event to commemorate this significant day with a festive celebration that brings together businesses, residents, and visitors alike. And whereas the Jubilee promises to be a day filled with joy, camaraderie, and entertainment featuring activities, live music, local artisans, and food vendors that highlight the diverse talents of our local community. And whereas this event not only provides an opportunity for our community members to come together and enjoy the festive atmosphere, but also acts as a catalyst for the growth and success of our local economy, creating a platform for businesses to showcase their offerings and gain exposure to a wider audience. And whereas the Jubilee is the longest-running event on the Arcata Plaza dating back over 150 years. Therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Arcata encourages all residents to attend the Arcata Chamber of Commerce's Fourth of July Jubilee on the Arcata Plaza on Tuesday, July 4th, 2022, dated June 21st, 2023, signed by our mayor, Sarah Schaefer. And we have Gloria Baker as a representative from the chamber to accept this tonight.
I just want to say thank you for that. And if everyone could come out to the plaza on Tuesday, July 4th, if you're able, from 11 to 5, we're going to have local music, local food, local vendors, a kids' corner, a dunk tank that hopefully the mayor will get in. And we're also going to be increasing our waste diversion efforts even more so than previous years, so we would love to see you all. Thanks.
Thank you, Gloria. And then we have a third surprise ceremonial matter that Vice Mayor Matthews will tell you all about.
All right. You may have noticed that the council is more colorful than usual tonight, and thank you to the Eureka City Council for this idea. And we want to recognize and celebrate the month of June as Pride Month and show support for our 2S LGBTQAI community. As a City Council, we recognize that every member of our community deserves to be treated with respect, dignity, fairness, regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity. It is through acknowledging and supporting Pride Month that we reaffirm our commitment to fostering an inclusive and welcoming environment for all. During this month, we have an opportunity to reflect on the progress we have made, but also to recognize that there is still work to be done. We must actively challenge discrimination, prejudice, and bias that still persists in our society, sadly, even here in Arcata. By doing so, we can create a community that values diversity and ensures that every individual can live their lives authentically and without fear. I would like to take a moment to express my gratitude to the 2S LGBTQAI+ individuals who have fought for their rights and paved the way for progress. Their courage, resilience, and unwavering commitment to social justice has made our city a more inclusive and compassionate place for everyone. We must continue to listen to these voices and experience of theirs individuals, address the unique challenges they face, and take action to create a more equitable society. This includes working towards comprehensive anti-discrimination policies and safe spaces for all. Today, I invite each and every one of you to join us in celebrating Pride Month. Let us participate in the various events, parades, and gatherings taking place throughout our county. There are several events happening this weekend. You can go to Queer Humboldt, Las Coats Pride, or Redwood Pride to see what events they have this weekend. Let's engage in conversations, learn from one another, and promote understanding, love, and acceptance. There is no room for hate in Arcata, and this council stands in solidarity and love with our 2S LGBTQAI+ community. Thank you, and happy Pride Month.
Thank you for sharing those words with us, Meredith. All right. That takes us to early oral communications. So if you have one of those cards with a number on it, please line up behind the podium. And if you are waiting in the wings to see if there's anybody else online, you might as well line up. So make your way to the podium, and you have two minutes. It's not on my script. Oh, yeah, probably we are. Wrong document. All right. Okay, just kidding. Sorry, early oral communications. We'll be there in a second, but before that, we have our report by a commissioner committee. And so that means we do have our annual report from the Forest Management Committee. And then after that, we will be going into early oral communications. Sorry for the mix-up. So, yes, please come on up, and we're ready to hear from our Forest Management Committee.
Sorry about that, oral communications, folks. Hello, council. My name is Dennis Halligan. I'm the chairman of the city's Forest Management Committee. And basically, for those who aren't familiar with the committee, we basically advise the City Council and commissioners on topics related to forestry, ecology, and wildlife on the city's own forest lands. In addition to making recommendations to the council on potential amendments to the city's forest management plan, we also review the city's timber harvest operations before they're filed with the California Department of Forestry, and we conduct post-harvest reviews once they're completed. The purpose of this report is basically to give you a summary of what happened with the Forest Management Committee and city staff in relation to the forest lands for fiscal year 2022 and 2023. And if you notice, I'll be referring to them, the back two pages of the annual report have a couple of maps, so when I start talking about different tracts and parcels, you'll be able to look on those and see what I'm talking about. So it's, as you can see, it's, you know, several pages of type, and so I'm just going to do a highlight because I know time is short. In general, the city's long-term goals for the forests are to promote a healthy late cereal forest ecosystem for wildlife and ecological benefits, as well as recreational benefits, and providing other quality-of-life resources such as access to natural areas for the community. Management priorities include watershed restoration, wildlife habitat, recreation, carbon sequestration, and timber harvest revenue. The city has three forest tracts: the Arcata Community Forest, the Sunny Brae Forest, and the Jacoby Creek Forest. The timber harvests on the city forest lands are developed to improve the health and the ecological functioning of forest stands. And I think anybody who walks out there can see the way we operate on this, on these forest lands is completely different than you see on industrial forest lands. A lot of folks go out there and they don't even notice that it's all been harvested before. So anyway, we also have a bunch of priority projects that we went through earlier in the year to discuss, you know, priorities such as land acquisition, both for forest and urban open space, roads and trail upgrades, and new recreational opportunities. So some of the activities and projects that were done in the past fiscal year included, for the committee, provided input on the Redwood National Redwood Park Improvement Plan, specifically on vegetation management and forest outreach and trailhead signage. The committee provided input on the second leg of the jump trail in the Arcata Community Forest. The committee provided input on the city's Gateway Area Plan, particularly as it related to the, how it would affect our local sawmill, which is a large diameter sawmill. And, you know, we need to keep them up and running because they're one of the only outfits around that take large diameter logs that we're producing and a lot of the other non-industrial landowners are producing around here. The environmental services staff completed the Fickle Hill Crossing and Trailhead improvements for the Arcata Ridge Trail. That was many years in the making, and so hats off to the environmental staff. The committee provided input, you know, for the five-to-10-year priority list I just mentioned. We provided input on Major A, the Open Space Parks and Trails Special Tax. That was passed. So some of the priorities for this fiscal year right now are Margaret Lane Trailhead Improvement, an alternative to Trail 9, Forest and Road Culvert Upgrades. A 2022 timber harvest was completed on the Klein La Forge parcel in Jacoby Creek, and you will see that on the second to the last, you know, second to the last page. You'll see a little dinky spot there, the Klein La Forge. And we ended up getting $356,000 in revenue for the city's forest fund from that. Delivered 94 metric tons of carbon credits for the Climate Action Reserve. And for research and monitoring, city staff continues to monitor spotted and barred owls, and they share all those data with adjacent landowners and with feds and the state. The city staff is continuing to measure, the second measurement of carbon plots located in the Sunny Brae Forest Track. That's on the last page. Let's see, the same thing is going on with the Jacoby Creek Forest Track, a new timber inventory and carbon modeling, and the plots are re-measured every 12 years. Roads and trails, over 18 miles of roads and trails continue to be maintained at a high standard. The city's improved signage within the forest to encourage further use of cellular-based Avenza maps, which are actually really handy because I use it quite a bit out there. City staff continued to work on the second leg of the ACF Jump Trail. The Redwood Coast Mountain Bike Association and the Humboldt High School Composite Mountain Bike Team provided volunteer assistance on trail workdays. And several community workdays involving hundreds of volunteers helped the city remove invasive plants, maintain and improve trails, and assist with litter cleanup. Some of the planned activities include conducting a field trip post-harvest to the Klein La Forge 2022 Harvest, conduct a field trip to the proposed Swainer Parcel Harvest for 2023, this year's harvest, continue to be involved in the non-industrial timber management plan amendments, continue involvement with recreational trail construction, coordinate with other advisory committees on things like the Redwood Park Master Plan and Open Space Parks and Trails Special Tax expenditures oversight, continue strengthening the partnership with state and federal agencies, Cal Poly, Redwood Sciences Lab, CR, involve students and faculty, you know, and help encourage, you know, projects up there and master's theses and things like that. Continue strengthening working relationship with the Wiat tribe, obtain approval for a long-term spotted owl management plan, update the carbon inventories, which I just mentioned, seek cost-share funding for the California Forest Improvement Program, and other grant sources for habitat road and timber stand improvement work, and continue collaboration with adjacent landowners on cooperative road use agreements and road improvements for the city's forest lands. And so as you leaf through this report, you'll see a lot of pretty nice pictures. Local youth riding, you see Mike McDowell with a D-tape there measuring a redwood. You'll see hiking in some of the carbon plots, see a spotted owl, some juvenile horned owls, great horned owls. What else we have here? Timber harvest planning. And last but not least, northern red-legged frog. It's not a California red-legged frog, it's northern. And then some other pictures in the maps. So anyway, that's about it. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. And if I can't, I'm sure Michael can.
Great, thank you, Dennis.
Thanks.
Alex has a question for you.
I just, it's not a question. I just wanted to bring up the fact that we have carbon credits, and that that's one way we help support our forests.
Yes.
And that the carbon credits are, you can pay, donate to the Humboldt Area Foundation for the Arcata Forest. I think I've got that correct. And so when you're traveling by plane, train, bus, car, you can make donations to offset your, our carbon footprint. And so I just wanted to mention that, and I know that's a good portion of what helps you do things.
Yes, and it's a great gift-giving idea. And so one of the things about it right now, though, is we're undergoing re-measurement of our carbon areas, carbon projects. And so while this re-measurement and remodeling is going on, those are currently frozen. So once the modeling is done, and it'll all be up and running again. But for now, during this interim period, it's frozen.
But you still can make a donation.
Oh, yeah.
And that, that's what I was hoping, that people would realize that they can offset their carbon footprint by making a donation to Humboldt Area Foundation for the Arcata Forest.
And to us, no, it goes to us. You buy them directly from the city.
Right.
Well, we used to do, I'm sorry, in the old days.
Yeah, well, I've bought them.
That's how I knew it was, so I'm sorry.
No, I used to buy, well, up until this year, I've been buying them every year, you know, to offset, you know, carbon used by my entire family, especially during the holiday season. And I'll send them out, instead of buying gifts, I'll send them out in envelopes. So anyway.
So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis.
Oh, I just wanted to make a plug about the Avenza map. A couple of years ago, I got lost in the community forest, and lucky for me, between the Avenza map and David Loy, our community development director, you did not have to send a search and rescue team out there for me. And I will admit that I do get lost in my own backyard. I just wanted to thank the entire committee staff and the staff liaison for your thorough and informative report, with some beautiful photos to boot. And I just wanted to, in reference to page eight, the box on the right side of the page, I wanted to say how inspiring it is to see this type of language included in city, local city government documents. It says, "Community-based forestry is a participatory approach to forest management, and community-based approaches give local residents both the opportunity and the responsibility to manage their natural resources effectively and to enjoy the benefits of that responsibility." So again, just thank you for reminding us and inspiring us to be involved and engaged in our local government, because you can make a difference. And do go buy some of those carbon credits, they're great gifts.
Yes, and download the Avenza app. I agree with you on that one. All right, so that now takes us to early oral communications. Sorry for the mix-up on the, the script is slightly different than the agenda tonight. And so again, we will take the first, we're going to take 15 minutes of comments during this open period. And so the City Council values your comments. This 15-minute time period allows you to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. And know that pursuant to the Brown Act, we cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on our posted agenda. And at the end of oral communications, the council may respond to statements. And again, there will be a public comment on each individual agenda item, and then again, at the end of the meeting, under item number 12. So please make your way to the podium, or if you are on Zoom, now is a good time to already raise that hand or press star nine.
So mayor, I don't have anyone online with a hand raised. If you want to just go through 15 minutes here.
Thank you, Mayor Schaefer. Councilmembers, my name is Dan Berman. I work with First Five Humboldt. We are a countywide government organization working to improve the lives of young children and their families. And I'm here tonight to thank the city, and especially the Recreation Department and your Recreation Supervisor Heather Stevens and her staff for their fabulous work for 15 years now hosting playgroups in Arcata at the D Street Center. We are excited to be doing another grant agreement with the city for another year. I think First Five Humboldt will be contributing about $23,000 towards supporting playgroups, and this is one of about 24 grants we're doing around the county for playgroups for families and their children. But we just, I wanted to come tonight on behalf of First Five and thank the city for their partnership in this. The, the cost of running playgroup is significantly more than we are able to support at First Five Humboldt, sadly. So I want to thank the city for their financial contribution towards playgroup. But more than that, really, for their leadership and incredible staff work in making a really welcoming and wonderful environment for families in Arcata and the surrounding area and their children to come and spend time together, learn parenting skills, and just get to get out of the house and, and have a lovely social time with your very young children. So I want to encourage members of the public to make use of playgroup and thank the city and their wonderful staff for your longstanding partnership in this wonderful program. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Fred Wise. I'd like to point out a small, yet significant suggestion from the public that has been ignored from the general plan update. The land use element is perhaps the most important chapter in the general plan. The first two sentences currently read, and I quote, "Arcata's land use patterns have been shaped by many factors and reflect more than 160 years of community development. The early settlement of the town, initially called Union Town, grew around a central plaza." I had requested that words such as "non-indigenous" or "European origin" be inserted into that sentence. That's been ignored. That's one of what I think are hundreds of comments from the public that have been ignored during this process. The second draft of the Gateway Plan came out in October 2022. The message was that the plan incorporated the recommendations from the city's committees and from the public. We knew that was a false statement. Four days later came a clarification that it didn't include anything that wasn't in agreement with the first draft, that there be a table that would show the non-comporting elements. We waited five months for that table. The table contains numerous errors and misunderstandings, contains the Transportation Safety Committee saying that L Street should be maintained as its current configuration, which we know is not true. The chairs of the Planning Commission, chair of the Transportation Safety Commission, the most senior member of the Planning Commission have all been ignored. They've requested that David Loy be bypassed in the communications between the Transportation Safety Committee and the Planning Commission. I regard that as a major problem. Thank you.
Good solstice to the council, the staff, the people here in the room, the people on Zoom, and the people who will be watching this later on. My name is Joanne McGary. I come here all the time. I usually like to speak about three things. So the three things I'd like to speak about today are my THC and CBD concepts for our community, our town. I'd like to speak about resiliency, and I'd like to speak about the Peace and Justice Center sign I brought here today in hopes that we have a future place for it. But first of all, a reminder, I did send you an email. I did get a response from a couple of council members. I appreciate that and hope to have, carry on more conversation in person with them and the other council members. But THC, just as a reminder, and for those new to my concept, the T stands for transparency, it stands for truth, and it stands for trust. The H is for honesty, humility, and humane-ness. The C is for caring, compassion, and connectedness. The CBD component of our community, hopefully, is that of courage, boldness, and bravery, and decisiveness, not dividedness. So I just say those out loud to myself and to you and everybody watching and hearing that this is important to me. So resiliency comes in a seasonal way. I went to a Blue Lake Resilience Conference event last week, and we need to have that in Arcata on a regular basis. And finally, the Peace and Justice Center sign. I acquired it and took it as a sign. I need a new place to hang it. And so I will hopefully be talking to folks about that in the future. And anybody in this room who's interested in working with me on that, let's get peace and justice back in the center of our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Hello, my name is Carlos. I'm here to read a letter on behalf of Centro del Pueblo. Since 2021, the Sanctuary Garden in Arcata Since 2021, the Sanctuary Garden in Arcata stands as a place that welcomes immigrants, migrants, BIPOC, and more members of the community to gather. Every week, volunteers of all ages, from children as young as two to respected elders, meet to place love and care into the very earth itself. From families from McKinleyville, Eureka, and more, join us in deepening our connections to tradition. We come together in this space that should be a safe haven for everyone to grow and learn. Unfortunately, that safety continues to be violated time and time again. Community members are sometimes hesitant, participate in the garden out of fear for their safety. For over a year, we have seen our garden vandalize almost every month by acts of intentional malice. Our crops have been cut down, our signs defaced, cameras and lights stolen, and chains have been placed on the fences to bar us entry. These are repeated attempts to tell us that this is not our land. Whoever's committing these crimes feels like we do not and will never belong. We are afraid for our safety at times. How much more will this continue before the messages escalate into physical threats? The garden's future is uncertain, so we must act now to protect what we believe is a sacred place. Centro del Pueblo is honored that some of you have already joined us at the Sanctuary Garden to show that those who oppose our existence, that we are strong and we have the support we need to not just survive here but to thrive. However, if the perpetrator of these crimes sees the unified support of the city council, it will send a message that Arcata does not stand for hate. We call for the public announcement of the full council solidarity with the garden and the intention to fund and protect it. Please invite your friends and families so that you too can share it in this space with all of us and expand our network. We would like to show that we will not be defeated nor deterred. We have the determination and will to stay. Join us in our efforts to create a safer network, not just here but in Arcata as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Please go ahead.
Hi, everyone. My name is Cynthia Ammerman. I'm an assistant professor in the Department of Native American Studies at Cal Poly Humboldt.
And I'm Andrea Delgado, an assistant professor in the Department of English. We're here today to present you with a letter signed by many departments, organizations, and individuals at the university and to acknowledge that Centro del Pueblo and El Jardín Santuario are vital community partners. The Cal Poly Humboldt campus community condemns the repeated racist attacks targeting Centro del Pueblo's Jardín Santuario, a local sanctuary garden on the corner of 11 and F. The Jardín Santuario is a vital, multi-generational, multicultural space for people of all backgrounds. It is an empowering place for community building, cultural revitalization, practicing food sovereignty, and for knowledge exchange. El Jardín is a unique destination in the county that centers indigenous and migrant perspectives. It also spreads awareness about the rights of migrants and indigenous people to both the students and the wider community. The repeated hateful attacks against the Jardín Santuario are rooted in the history of white supremacy, anti-indigenous, and anti-black racism, and xenophobia. They are a direct affront to the principles outlined in the City of Arcata Sanctuary City Ordinance. And as per the ordinance, we hold the Arcata City Council accountable for creating a climate, for quote, "creating a climate of welcome and inclusiveness, protecting and preserving the values of democracy and freedom and respecting the human dignity and human rights of all persons." The ordinance also states that the city, that quote, "The City of Arcata assures its vulnerable communities that the city supports them, will do all it can to maintain and improve their quality of life, and will not tolerate acts of hate, discrimination, bullying, or harassment." We thank you for acting with the immediacy and seriousness required to address these hateful attacks that have impacted our community and ask that you stay committed to this work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, good afternoon. Gracias, Jardín Santuario, se ve, se siente. And everybody that is on Zoom, and what the pandemic left us, this hybrid communication, thank you. This is the second visit of Centro del Pueblo and the Sanctuary Garden to this forum. And I want to thank you first for visiting the garden these days. We hope we can see you often there. And we thank the space for having given us today more food. I want to write something that stands from this forum. What has been produced here is also very important for this city. It's the Sanctuary City 2017, the declaration that this city wrote. It says, "The City of Arcata assures its vulnerable communities that the city supports them, will do all it can to maintain and improve their quality of life, and will not tolerate acts of hate, discrimination, bullying, or harassment." This is written, this is part of the job you have done and your, the former and the past city council members. I want to invite you to enhance, to implement sanctuary. This shouldn't be only in a document or in a desk. This should be a practice, being a sanctuary city and every day teaching lesson. I have here letters for more than 60 people, for more than 20 organizations, including Cal Poly. You have the most influential people here speaking of production of knowledge. Let's work all together with Cal Poly, with Centro del Pueblo, with these residents to have a plan for implementation. And I want to request publicly a session for talking about being a sanctuary city and helping the sanctuary garden in a consistent way. And just very quickly, please repeat the acknowledgement of Latin Spanish. We don't want that to be performative, but part of where is a city as a sanctuary. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brenda. Thank you. Still wondering if there's nobody on Zoom. We do have time for one more comment here this evening.
Hello, council. Thank you so much for being here tonight. You look perfectly normal to me, by the way. I didn't notice the rainbow at all. Maybe that's because it's normal here in Arcata, right? I ask you to attend to the recommendations of the Transportation and Safety Committee regarding the L Street Linear Park, regardless of whether the Planning Commission attends to them or not. I have tried to imagine what good it could do to fracture the city with a busy truck corridor or one-way street. Who wants this? Who would benefit? I don't know. But the answer must have to do with the Planning Commission's continuing refusal to take up the recommendations of the Transportation and Safety Committee, buttressed by the oral and written calls of many citizens. So we say again, no to the couplet. Go back to the drawing board and figure out a better way to manage the traffic on K Street. Keep L Street as it is. Declare it a linear park from Samoa to Alliance with no cars or trucks. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, folks. I just wanted to make a quick kind of statement and response just because I know it's so, it's difficult with the structure of our business council meetings to be able to kind of have any discussion or back and forth conversation on these, you know, items that are not on the agenda and to have any real, you know, deeper dialogue and brainstorming. But again, I know myself and my other colleagues would be happy to schedule time to do that with interested members of the community. And later, also during our council and staff updates, I will be talking a bit about, hopefully, a collaboration to be able to work with Equity Arcata, to be able to hold space and kind of have regular convenings and conversations to discuss and find solutions, just like what the Sanctuary Garden is facing right now. And I just want to thank everybody that came out at our last meeting and at this meeting to speak with us tonight and to speak on the important issue of needing to end racism and hate in Arcata. And I suspect that myself, I know myself and my colleagues have heard loudly the need to, you know, take more actionable steps to be able to make Arcata safe for everyone. I know that as a start, several of us have attended workdays at the garden. And it's just such a beautiful space that you all provide to our community. It's just right down the street from City Hall here, and it's just a blooming, bright, shining light that we all get to enjoy daily. And so I know that we've, some of us have attended workdays and also assisted with materials for garden improvements and are working on more visible and secure safety measures. And I know that we're all appreciative of these first steps, but that's just what it is, it's first steps. And so, you know, the city has identified this as a hate crime and will continue to investigate it as such. And anyone with any information about the crime, of course, is encouraged to come forward and, you know, provide that information to our investigation. And as we will talk about our budget this evening, the council has also set aside $5,000 to go towards any other needs for security or, you know, enhancement of security that Centro del Pueblo will identify. And myself and the city manager will be following up directly with representatives to arrange those details. So again, thank you for being here tonight. I know cutting you off after two minutes doesn't always, it doesn't feel good for me either. And so, you know, please feel free to reach out. I'm available by phone and email to be able to set something up so we can have a more meaningful discussion. So just thank you, everybody, for being here. Thank you, guys. All right, that takes us now into the meat of the business of our meeting, to our consent calendar. So all matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There's no separate discussion of any of these items. And if discussion is required, that item can be pulled from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members and members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. Item A is to approve the minutes of the city council meeting of June 6, 2023. Item B is to approve the minutes of the city council meeting of June 7, 2023. Item C, biweekly report on disbursements. Item D, accept in-kind donation of a new scoreboard for the Arcata Ballpark from the Humboldt Crabs. Item E, award a contract for the 2023 Corporation Yard Building Siding Replacement Project to Kyle-Botten DBA North Star Development in the amount of $63,715. Authorize the city manager to increase the contract amount by up to 5%, $3,185.78, for a total amount not to exceed $66,901.35, and to allow for unforeseen contingencies and to authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. Item F, award a contract for Carlson Park Playground Equipment Purchase and Installation to Miracle Recreation Play Power Incorporated in the amount of $259,972.84, including tax. Authorize the city manager to increase the contract amount by up to $12,998.5% for a total amount not to exceed $272,970.84, to allow for any unforeseen contingencies and to award a contract for Carlson Park Playground Surfacing Purchase and Installation to Soft Surfaces Incorporated in the amount of $89,991.07, and to authorize the city manager to increase the contract amount by up to $4,499.5% for a total amount not to exceed $94,490.07, to allow for any unforeseen contingencies and to authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. Item G, approve the design and award a construction contract for the 2023 Arcata Annual Paving Project to GR Sundberg Incorporated in the amount of $1383,470, including base bid and additive alternatives 1 to 3, and authorize the city engineer to approve change orders and increase the contract amount by up to $138,347.10% of the total bid for a total not to exceed $1,521,817, to allow for any unforeseen contingencies and additional work as necessary, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. And item H, adopt resolution number 223-63, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata authorizing application for a manufactured housing opportunity and revitalization more program grant, up to $3 million. All right, that was a lot of numbers and words. I believe we have a request to remove item G from the consent calendar. Are there any other requests from the council to remove items from consent?
I'd like to remove item B, F, and H.
Okay, B and F and H. Not a lot of options left. Anybody else? All right.
So I'll move for approval of A, C, D, E. And that's it.
I'll second. All right, we have a motion by council member Stillman, a second by Vice Mayor Matthews. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to the minutes. Item B, go ahead.
Oh, it was just a typo on pocket page 20. It says Linda Perez. It should be Brenda. That was on that one.
Great, we will get that changed. Do we have a motion to approve with the accepted change?
I move to approve item B with the change.
I'll second. All right, motion and a second. All in favor for item B?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries unanimously. That takes us to item F. Go ahead.
So first, I'm grinning ear to ear because I'm so excited. I did have a constituent had a couple of questions on the playground costs. I was able to get clarification from Emily Sinkorn, but I think that you probably do a way better job explaining the playground equipment, the reasons were cost and why we're not doing local, those kinds of things.
Sure, yes. So good evening, council members. The Carlson Park project, it has been an exciting project. It's been on the city's and the city council's priority list for a long time. So we're really excited, again, to have three grants to develop the playground, picnic area, special event area, river access, pickleball courts, and a parking lot, also with EV charging. So a lot of excitement coming up. And so on the agenda today is around the playground equipment and surfacing. And so we really looked back at all of our outreach and input from the Valley West community for what they really wanted to see and really tying in with the river theme. And so we reached out to a number of playground manufacturers, ones we'd worked with before, ones we're just starting to work with for Redwood Park, and some others. And there are no local playground manufacturers in Humboldt County. There's probably just not the market for that. So we really rely on a number of companies. We call local other jurisdictions that have worked with them to see how their playground equipment is utilized, how it is easy to, you know, sustainably maintained by their parks departments. You know, so we work with the manufacturers and also get backup, you know, input from other jurisdictions. And so we really try to keep as much of our expenses local, much of our, you know, payment local. We, what will be coming to the council later this summer will be, hopefully, we'll be releasing a bid for the main of the concrete excavation, kind of the bulk of the work. The playground is its own specialized work. So hopefully, that will be coming to you in late July or early August. And we really anticipate working with a local contractor that's identified through that bidding process. So hopefully, that's just a little bit more background.
I think that answered most of the questions.
Yeah, I believe we have comment on this specific item. So go ahead, please.
Thank you, Councilmember White, for reading my email and others I know did as well. Thank you, council member White, for reading my email, and others I know did as well. My name's Joanna Gary, and I don't have children, but I've played in playgrounds and I appreciate their existence in our world. I continue to be kind of confused that information about this comes late to the game for some of us in the community. In fact, the Lost Coast Outpost just posted something today about this, or maybe it was yesterday. But when we're dealing with a lot of money, no matter where it's coming from and no matter how it's going to be spent, I just think more timely, ahead of a meeting like this, it would be appreciated to, you know, see pictures and have people know a little bit more about why they're choosing the particular company, why they're choosing such a design and materials, and why it costs so much, because it really costs a lot of money these days, it seems. And only question too, because the city of Eureka was looking at a waterfront playground, and they were going to have Blue Ox design one of the installments in that playground, and they had a local architect proposing a certain design. I have no idea where they were going to get the equipment, per se, but I think the region we live in, and the Arcata particularly, we can be really thoughtful and look at local people to create what would be unique, appropriate for our community, and locally designed and built, and another, you know, flag in our, that we can wave about us doing things in our community, like self-generated, as opposed to hiring companies that I'm sure do a wonderful job, but they're not organically from here. So it's just something I like to share philosophically about how we are designing our future and the future for the children. And I guess that's all I really wanted to say, you know, it's going forward, and I hope that the next playground, maybe we give some local folks a chance, like maybe even kinetic artists to design things. So, thank you.
All right, item F. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll make a motion to approve item F.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, that takes us to item G.
Hi, Netra. First of all, I want to thank you for meeting with me today at the intersection and street in question. So we passed a complete streets ordinance last year, I believe, and in the complete streets ordinance, it states that, you know, anytime we redo a street, that we take into consideration making it more accessible for bikes, for pedestrians, for anybody that's not in a car. And, you know, as we're going through and redoing this street, and looking at the improvements that we're going to make, it does not, I think, really fit into the idea of what our complete streets policy is going to look like. And, you know, we had a conversation about it today, and we talked about exceptions, and I'm sorry, and I'm going to read off my phone, which I think is tacky, but. So, you know, it says that exceptions, there's reasons that exceptions can be made if the cost is excessively disproportionate to the need, there's documented absence of current future need, and there is a reasonable or equivalent project along the same corridor that's already programmed. And so I know that, you know, one of the parts of the complete streets policy is to have a public hearing, which I guess we did, and nobody came to it, so, which is another, like, I don't know how to make, like, people go to, I didn't even go to it, so, I mean, I understand that, you know, attempts were made to, like, you know, have public comment on this, and, you know, I know a great solution that was brought up would be to, you know, take those eight parking spots away and make that a bike lane, and, well, I would really, really love to do that, that would, you know, constitute like a whole other public hearing and after, can we just talk about this a little, like, why the exception was made? I don't want to just talk at you, sorry.
No. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council members, members of the public, and the staff. I'll just maybe go over the project. So this is our annual project, paving project, and this year we are doing portion of H Street, portion of G Street, and Western Road. Normally, the project, paving project includes paving, striping, and sidewalk works, and we are doing that. As you mentioned, we recently adopted our complete street policy, and we believe, based on what we have presented, it meets the complete street policy for all the elements of the project, except for the one location where we met today, and that is the intersection of H Street and 11th. So the block of H Street between 17th and 18th currently is, has enough right-of-way. However, not however, there is a bike lane also, however, that bike lane does not meet the standard. Bike lane needs to be exactly five feet, but currently because of the parking, it's less. And if you do the measurements everywhere, it looks like the width of the bike lane would be one and a half feet, which is not appropriate. So during the design, we decided, okay, we have a complete street policy, and we want to make sure we have a bike lane, pedestrian access, and vehicles. So there were three options. One option was the existing sidewalk is wider there. It was, it is seven and a half feet, so we can reduce that to five and gain some width. But knowing city of Arcata, I don't think we want to reduce the walkway. It's, people walk there, H Street is a busy street, it's better to have a wider walkway. So we left that. Second option was to remove eight parking stalls along the apartments or the housing, and knowing what we know from past practices, it's not ideal to remove the parking. So what is the best solution to move forward? We cannot put a bike lane because we not, we don't have enough room, so we propose putting sharos, which advises the drivers that, yes, you can drive here, but also watch out for the bicycles. Upstream and downstream, there are bike lanes, but that block will not have a bike lane unless we get rid of the parking or reduce the walkway.
Can you explain what the, what's a shar?
Sharo. So sharo is just a sign that you have, you will see throughout the city, especially on the 11th Street and Union Street, and on K Street, that tells people that this area also belongs to people who are on bicycles. So those are called sharos, share the road, that's what the sign means. So we can enhance those signs, and we've been talking about with other staff here. So one of the options could be just, instead of just putting the sharos, we can enhance the sharos with maybe more green paint around it. We have seen those in different areas in Oregon and some part of California. We have to see if that's a standard. So coming from south, from 18th Street, from the bike lane, just put a sharo with the green around it, and when they're exiting, showing the same thing and put one more in between. So that will at least let people know they are supposed to be sharing the road. So that's one option right now, but, you know, other option would be getting rid of parking.
Yeah, I was just, you know, so proud of us when we passed that ordinance, and I am just, I don't want to get us in the habit of, like, being performative about it, about, you know, oh, we passed this thing, but, you know, every time there's like a reasonable exception, we're just going to go ahead and, and go with that. So, I mean, I understand, but at the same time, I kind of don't feel good about it. So, thank you.
Yeah, no, I'll just add that definitely we are complying with complete street policy, you know. Currently, on Western Road, there is supposed to be bike lanes, but there are no bike lanes right now. So as a part of the project, we are adding bike lanes, and we had enough right-of-ways, so in fact, we are adding a buffer lane between the travel lane and a bike lane. We're adding a buffer stripping, so that gives more flexibility. So whenever there's a right-of-way, and we can do it economically and feasibly, we are doing it, and we are complying with complete street policy.
Okay, it looks, or do you want, yeah, go ahead, please.
I was just wondering if we're still, like, if we're still moving forward on this item based on, we did get an email with some concerns, and then follow-up from our contracts and procurement staff, so I just wanted to make sure that we're still voting on this.
Yeah, it certainly is the discretion of the council, but the staff recommendation, based on our review of the concerns that were raised, is that one of the concerns that was raised was around labor compliance, and we did have a project with this particular, we've had many projects, successful projects with this particular local contractor. There was a paving project where an investigation around prevailing wage was completed. There was initially thought to have been some underpaid wages upon the completion of that investigation, though, the Labor Commission did determine that all of those wages were paid correctly. So that just kind of negated that portion of it. In addition, the other concerns that were raised were not requirements that were within the bid process, and we do believe that this is not only a responsive bid, but based on their past performance, is a responsible bidder, so the staff recommendation would be to move forward.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. All right, I think we have some members of the public that wanted to comment on this particular item, so if you have comments on consent calendar, item G about the paving project.
Good evening, I'm Colin Fisk, I'm the executive director of CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. I wanted to start out by saying that we do appreciate that the project includes some improvements for bikes and pedestrians. I, I do though want to emphasize that the complete, the complete streets policy requires that all projects include facilities within their limits for all modes of transportation, and within that, all users of all ages and abilities. And I think council member Matthews, Vice Mayor Matthews, earlier went through, you know, the three sort of criterion for when an exception can be made, and I don't see how, you know, parking is, falls into one of those categories. So to me, it doesn't seem like this is a case where an exception could be sustained. In any case, the most concerning exception that, you know, is noted is on H Street between 17th and 18th. Obviously, there's a bike lane marked there now, but it's essentially just the parking lane, so for all intents and purposes, there is no bike lane. In that block, I believe the, the width of the paved way is about 36 feet. That's entirely set aside for cars, for two driving lanes and two parking lanes. There's about 12 or 12 and a half feet of sidewalk. There's no space at all for bikes. I think this is a clear opportunity for us to live up to the promise of the complete streets policy. This is also one of the main thoroughfares in the city. It carries a lot of traffic, and in that segment, there's, there are no stop signs or anything, so often cars are speeding. I myself was actually almost hit on my bike in that exact location just a few weeks ago by a speeding driver in SUV, and so I guess it is a little personal to me. But in general, I really would encourage you, I think that the safety and comfort of all users, and remember, a sharo doesn't provide safe and comfortable access for kids, for seniors, for folks with disabilities who are not necessarily super confident on a bike, and so that is part of the policy. So I guess, I guess I would just encourage you to take some of that 36 feet of width, the one side of parking, those eight parking spaces, and set aside for the safe use of this other category of users, which is people on bikes, and in doing so, to fulfill the promise of the complete streets policy. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Matt Simmons. I want to stress that I am not here on behalf of the Planning Commission. I am here on behalf of the Redwood Coalition for Climate and Environmental Responsibility, or ROKER. I won't echo everything Colin said, but I did want to emphasize two points. First off, when you have a bike lane and then it disappears, I know personally, and also evidence backs this up, that is one of the most dangerous points in a bicyclist route. As someone who's like making an active effort right now to bike around Arcata more, those places in our city are really frustrating and can feel very sort of defeating when you get to them. The other thing I wanted to just emphasize, there were three exceptions listed in the policy, and I'm going to read off my phone, too. It's that the project is too costly, there isn't a demand for the project, or there's an equivalent project already scheduled. I'm fairly certain the exception that was used here was the first one, and I just don't want to set a precedent that removing parking spaces is too costly. I understand that it would involve another hearing, and you'd have to talk about it, but if we're setting that precedent that anytime you have to remove parking, it's too costly, and you get out of the complete streets policy, it's not going to be a very effective policy. Thank you for listening, and, yeah.
Thank you. Right, comments on item G?
Hi there, I'm a member of the community, and this is JJ, also a member of the community. You may have heard him already give some of his comments on the matter. He has a lot to say. So I just wanted to come and speak in support of prioritizing the bike lane on, in addition to the sidewalk. When I lived in Seattle, partially because of poor bike lane signage, I suffered a crash that led to a broken shoulder, two implants, six crown, four crowns, and a lengthy recovery process. Now that I have my first son here with me, I'm excited to start biking around Arcata, and one thing that would make me feel safer to do that, safe enough to do that, is knowing that bike lanes are prioritized in the city to prevent a crash like the one I suffered in Seattle. So I'm just here to, to make those comments and to remind you that bike lane, prioritizing bike lanes and sidewalks are an investment in our next generation. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Wendy Ring, and I'm retired physician and a frequent cyclist through Arcata. My husband, who does not drive, uses his bicycle exclusively to get in and around town, and so this is a big concern of mine. I want to underline that comment about disappearing sharos. They are, nobody knows what they are. I once kind of did a little experiment and walked around and asked people if they knew what a sharo was, and nobody did. So, I mean, essentially, biking where there's a sharo is like having a sign on your back that says "Don't Hit Me" that's written in Greek. It just isn't really any kind of safety, and especially when it is disappearing and reappearing. The purpose of the complete streets policy is to make the rebalancing of our streets the default, because right now, it's cars are the default, parking is the default. And so if we want to change that, then we can't just have an exception because someone wants to park a car. It just, you know, I mean, this is, this is, it's a transformation, it's not a comfortable transformation, but I think if we're serious about climate action and serious about having a safe, a safe streets for everyone to get around, then we have to have a continuous bike lane. And, and we don't want to set a precedent of saying, oh, we have a complete streets policy, but it's just on paper, and we don't, and there doesn't really have to be a serious exception and meet the criteria and follow the procedure. So it's great that we have this policy, I'd just like to see us really follow it through. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Any comments online? No? I've been forgetting to ask the Zoom world. All right, I'll bring it back to the council for comments, questions, or a motion. Go ahead, Stacy.
Well, I'm just wondering if maybe we should table this and bring it back as an agenda item, if people are wanting to discuss it more, to get, you know, more in depth? Yes.
Well, I just wanted to offer, there was discussion about needing another public hearing. This is a fairly minor modification in the contract. I mean, in essence, it is striping, and so I do think that it is important, if we're taking away parking that has been existing a long time, we've learned that it is good to have public dialogue around that. But I do think that you can approve this contract tonight and still move forward with that discussion in the community, and choose at your next meeting whether or not to just simply make that, you know, that change. It's not going to be a substantial change order in this project.
Yeah, that was the exact question I was going to ask, and I think, because I know how much staff time goes into bids and contracts and everything like that, and that the other parts of this project, a lot of us are really excited about, but there's just kind of this one underlying question, so, because I like to get rid of parking, too, so.
Yeah, I mean, you could approve it with removal of the parking, but ask us to bring back an item for public input on that parking, if you want to.
So how would that motion go, that I'd make a motion to accept item G, except for H Street between 17th and 18th Street, and bring that back as an agenda item with public hearing?
No, I would just approve the project, approve the award of bid with augmentation to remove parking on H Street, and bring back to make sure that we receive public input on that.
That, I move that.
Well, I, yeah, I feel comfortable with that, but. So are we making the decision today that we are definitely removing the parking?
I think we're going to have, bring it back and have a public hearing about it, is what my, my.
Because that's not what it sounds like to me.
Well, if we decide at the public hearing, we don't want to remove the parking, and then we just go back to the Plan A, that's already to the contractor, right?
Yeah, so the project involves paving and striping, so I think the portion that we are talking is striping portion to remove the parking and adding a parking lane, so that's, sorry, adding a bike lane. So that's not an explicit portion of the work, so we can move forward with the project. So that would give us a time, at least to talk to the neighbors there, if we remove the parking, what would happen? So that could be a public hearing on its separate, but that doesn't add a cost to the project or in any ways, and it doesn't change the project, because that's just a striping portion of the project. So I would recommend moving forward with the project and maybe not striping that portion and reevaluating that portion of the street for parking versus bike lane in next meeting or in, in next few months, because striping will be, not be happening until September.
I'm comfortable with that.
I'm more comfortable with the modified version, just because I don't want to, I don't want to rush into a decision without fully doing the due process, that's all.
Yeah, so I'm very comfortable with that.
I'll second that.
Clerk, is that okay? Is that okay? All right, so we have a motion and a second for a modification of item G and to see more of that about the striping in the upcoming future. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries unanimously, and thank you, public, for your participation on that, and CRTP. on that, and CRTP, and ROKER for bringing that to some of our attention. So thank you. And that now takes us to item H, which I believe Councilmember White had some questions about.
So on page sixty-six on the recommendation and the staff report, it says that there are hundreds of health and safety violations in Arcata from minor to serious. And this is in reference to the Manufactured Opportunity Revitalization Program or more. Some of these concerns can result in a mobile home being inhabitable, which can leave yet another family without a home. And so this grant is going to prevent more homelessness, and it's easier to be proactive than, rather than after the fact. I just wanted to, I'm just really excited. We used to have this program, and I've been waiting in anxious anticipation for it to come back. So it's been, I believe, close to ten years since we've had this opportunity in the state of California, with the exception of one application being approved in that entire time, which was in Coachello Valley in Riverside County. So I just wanted to applaud David and staff in the Community Development Department for going after this grant, and I'm real excited about it. That was it.
Great. I'm excited about it, too, and you don't even have to answer any questions, David, unless you want to say anything about it, but it seems exciting. Yeah.
So I'd like to move to adopt resolution two-two-three-six-three, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata authorizing application for a manufactured housing opportunity and revitalization more program grant up to three million.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries unanimously, and that takes us into our business, which is old business. And the old business, item A, is a public hearing on the proposed appropriations limit for fiscal year 2023-24, and consider adopting resolution number two-two-three-five-five, adopting the proposed appropriations limit for fiscal year 2023-24, and a public hearing on fiscal year 2023-24 proposed budget, and consider adoption of resolution number two-two-three-five-seven, adopting the city budget for fiscal year 2023-24. Do we have a staff report from Finance Director?
We do, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. So we're asking you to do two things. We're going to do one presentation on both of these, but basically what we're doing is, we're going to first approve the 2023-24 appropriation limit, which is also known as the GAN limit. This is an interesting piece of legislation. It has like three different propositions, back to nineteen seventy-nine. It's a convoluted calculation we do, but it sets a limit that doesn't necessarily tie to any specific fund in your budget. But we're going to walk through it real quickly. The second item is actually, once you've set your limit, we'll actually go through and ask you to consider approving the 2023-24 budget. This is going to be fairly quick in my presentation tonight, because we have spent quite a bit of time already going through this. But again, that doesn't mean that you can't ask questions, and it doesn't mean that this is the last that you'll have to deal with, the 2023-24 budget this year, so. So we're going to start again with the appropriations limit. You've actually seen these same calculations at the June seventh meeting. Really quickly, every year, the council is required to adopt your appropriation limits for your new year. Basically, what it is, is it's the prior year's appropriation limit or GAN limit, and it's adjusted for a price or inflation factor and population. You can see that that comes out to an increase of eight-point-seven percent, which is about one-point-six million dollars, that you get to increase your appropriations limit for the year, which sets it at just around nineteen-point-nine million. We talked about this a little bit on the seventh, but one of the quirky things that we are doing in the next few years is that we are sort of by, not choice, but by request, a strong request from the state, we are actually adding back to our expenditures, the state funding in the amount of one, or excuse me, in the amount of four-point-nine million dollars associated with the Home Key Operations Grant that we received from the state. This essentially will allow the state to not exceed their GAN or their appropriation limit. It's kind of like sharing it. The good thing is that even taking that, sort of subtracting that from our appropriation limit, provides us about fifteen million dollars as our high end. The local revenues that would be subject to the appropriation limit are about thirteen-point-five million, so we have approximately one-point-five million dollars sort of in flexibility or sort of breathing room for the current year. This could change, some interesting point here, this could change if we do find additional revenue sources. So it is something that we'll want to keep a close track on with that state give back. I'm just going to kind of shift gears and real quickly go through sort of what we've done with the budget process for this year. As I mentioned, this isn't the last time you'll see the budget. We started in March, which was a little bit late in your City Council goal-setting and priorities, which sort of sets the outline for the coming year's budget. We did the mid-year budget update on March fifteenth, and that kind of had two purposes. One was to look backwards at the 2022-2023 budget year, but also look forward and start setting ourselves up and figuring out where we were at and what projects were priorities. June seventh, we did a detailed review of the proposed budget. We're asking you to consider adoption of it this evening, but it's not the only time you're going to have. I kind of want to remind you, and you went through it already, tonight with the consent calendar. Essentially, at every regular meeting of the City Council, you deal with the budget. You're approving bids, you're approving contracts, you're looking at the cash disbursements. So there's a check-in process throughout the year. In addition to that, and regular updating and reporting, we will come back to you in February of 2024, and we'll look back on 2023-24 as we look forward to the 24-25 year. So there were a few updates, a few changes. Most of these, we've actually talked about already during the June seventh meeting, but there are a few changes to what was proposed before you this evening and is included in your resolution. So as we mentioned really quickly, we did not receive the Measure Z grant for the Juvenile Diversion Counselors. So that's actually revenue we had included in the budget. That'll be a subtraction of two-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars. We did receive a coastal commission, local coastal plan grant. This was after we had put the budget together, so you'll see that we've got revenue coming in of five-hundred thousand dollars, but we've also got an expense of a hundred thousand dollars for a net of zero. You had, at that June seventh meeting, approved adding a project manager that would be supported by grants for our capital projects. So you'll see that we've got the revenue coming in of the ninety-five thousand dollars, I rounded there, and you've got just under ninety-four thousand dollars in potential expenses to support that staff person. So again, for, in this case, a net of a hundred-and-seventy-one dollars. The next five million dollars, we spent quite a bit of time talking about, not just at the last meeting, but also in preparation of sort of our strategy to try to reduce the pension liability we have. That was not, because it was such a large dollar amount, I didn't include it as an expenditure, but it is technically, so we're adding it back in. That would be two-and-a-half million dollars from the general fund, a million dollars from your water fund, and one-point-five million dollars from the wastewater fund. And well, a million dollars is a lot. There's still a long ways to go, because we have about a twenty-nine-point-six million dollar liability there. The City Council had asked for a small dollar amount for a community fund. We've added fifteen thousand dollars to the budget for that. We had a correction for a tax increment funds. I found the schedule, was able to locate and actually update that number, and it's in our favor, so we've got an increase there. And then we updated our liability insurance, and in the process of that, we had about an eighty-five thousand dollar savings from our original estimate to the number that came in. But I also discovered that we had missed allocating a piece of that to one of our activities in our wastewater fund, so that's where you get the negative a hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars and five-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. The net, or the net change of all these will impact the overall budget by five million, two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars, and if I can read my paper here, four-hundred-and-seventy There are a few other things that I just wanted to make sure that you are aware of that will happen if you approve resolution two-two-three-five-seven, which is the budget this evening. So it does include adopting the budget, the capital improvement program, and the City Council goals and priority projects. You are also authorizing transferring one-million-one-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars from the general fund available fund balance to our reserve, and this is moving that reserve from twenty-five percent of operating expenses in a year to thirty percent. It's one of our ways to sort of make sure we buffer going forward. You're also authorizing moving about three-point-four million dollars from your wastewater available fund balance to the reserve for capital projects. In addition to that, we are going to set aside two-point-five million dollars in a section, an IRS Section 115 trust, and this will pre-fund our pension obligations. This will remain on the city's books. It's not an expenditure, but it is just a reserving of funds. And then finally, you're also agreeing that we will potentially provide amendments to the 2023-24 budget, as long as they're compliant with our budget and fiscal policies, which are also part of what you're adopting tonight. Big picture, there aren't too many changes in your overall budget. As you can see, though, if you go to the bottom line, which is your increase in, decrease in fund balance, obviously, twenty-one, twenty-two, you still are putting, you've already put aside thirteen-point-seven million dollars towards fund balance in those two years. The estimate of where we think we're going to end fiscal year 2023 was two-point-seven million dollars of excess expenditures over revenues. That's actually dropped to two million dollars, although the budget was originally your expenditures over revenues of five-point-three million dollars. But at the far right-hand side, probably the big change is in that fiscal year 2024 requested budget, that was eight-point-five million dollars negative impact to fund balance, and it's now thirteen-point-seven, and that's the number we just saw. And again, the vast majority of that is that five million dollars that we talked about using fund balance to pay down our pension obligations. This is just an overview, and I can see it doesn't show up very well, but an overview of where you're at with your estimated fund balances, with all those expenditures, and setting aside those funds for the reserves. If you go kind of again to the bottom line, you can see that you start your year in 2023 with about fifty-five-point-four million dollars in estimated available fund balance. Just as a point of comparison, I went back and looked at about the last four or five years' budgets, and that number has never been that high. It's been in the forties, and it's been as low as the, I think, twenty million dollars. So you're in good, you're in good shape going into this year. You can see your revenues and expenditures that tie to the last sheet, those transfers to reserves, which includes setting aside the reserves plus funding the IRS 115 pre-pension trust. And so our estimate at the end of the year is that with all of your funds, what you would have available, not including reserves, would be twenty-nine-point-six million dollars. And just to put this in a little bit of context, twenty-six, or excuse me, twenty-nine-point-six million dollars is about fifty-four percent of your operating expenses for the year. Keep in mind that that includes that big chunk of forty-three-point-seven million dollars in capital, which is typically not taken into account when you look at what you're setting aside for reserves. You usually go with just your operating, your ongoing cost, which is about forty-two-point-one million dollars. So you have about a hundred-and-ten, if you add in your reserves, you have about a hundred-and-ten percent in reserves of your annual operating cost, which is pretty extraordinary. If you go back a couple meetings when we talked about pension and what a good reserve is, twenty-five to thirty percent is considered a good, solid reserve. So even at the fifty-four percent overall, or the hundred-and-ten percent if you take just operating, I feel pretty confident that we're moving into the next year in good shape. That doesn't mean that 24, 25, and future years may not have challenges, but at this point, at least you have a good, solid base moving forward. And one other item I just wanted to highlight, because it was a pretty well-put-together chapter, and it wasn't included in the budget document for the June seventh meeting. Our engineering department put together a capital improvement program, and it is a really nice document. This is a tool that will kind of get incorporated into the process going forward. It adds the ability for not just the management, but you and the public to see sort of the process as far as how we plan our capital projects, the cost estimates. We'll talk about how they're prioritized, and it really allows us more transparency and more communication, and a better way to match your goals to the projects that we actually fund in the long run. And just a side note on that, we will be incorporating that into the Open Gov new system, and so that will be part of the online budget book also, so it'll be available even in wider audiences. And with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Great, thank you so much, Tabitha. Let's open it up for questions. Meredith, would you like to start?
Thank you so much, Tabitha. This was such a clear presentation, but just wanted to pick up that thread that you started about like how we're looking long-term, like where do you see us in like five and ten years? Are we on a good trajectory? Should we be nervous about the upcoming years? What is our long-term forecast look like?
So I think I've probably mentioned this to one or two of you. In fiscal year 23-24, I think we are in really good shape. I will say, once you get out to year 24-25 and sort of moving forward, revenues are going to be tight, and that's going to be a challenge for us to meet those service levels that are expected in this community. If prices continue to increase like they are, that's sort of an unmanageable balance. It's part of the reason that you have given direction to staff to meet with the transaction and use tax oversight committee and look at the possibility for potential tax issuances or ballot measures in 2024, because we really do have that hole to fill. So in the short run, I think we're in good shape. I think the planning is there. I think the foundation is being laid. I think setting aside the reserves, paying down the pension will certainly make things easier going forward when you save those interest costs and some of those expenses, but it doesn't mean that we don't still need to be looking sort of at that five- and ten-year horizon to make sure that we're planning forward. And one of my goals is to actually be able to put together on paper financial plans that take us out a few more years, so that we can see how the changing environment or changing decisions will impact the long-term fiscal sustainability of the city.
That's great. I would really appreciate looking at that. Thank you so much.
All right, do we have any other questions? Oh, go ahead.
That's fine. I was just going to add to that. We have a lot of programs that we've been building over the last several years with one-time monies, with CDVG funds, and with ARPA funds from, or long-term programs like our Juvenile Diversion Counselors that have been funded with the County Measure Z Fund. So as those funding sources start to whittle down in the next couple of years, I think is really when we talk to the community about how to long-term fund missed community ambassador juvenile diversion counseling programs and those types of things. So that will be that discussion.
I just have two quick questions. One of them was actually about the juvenile diversion. We are still keeping that program, though, right? We're just paying for it ourselves.
Yeah, so it's, the expenses in our budget, we just don't have the revenue side of it, so it'll come out, it ultimately will come out of our fund balance for this year.
Okay, just wanted, I know that's an important program, so I just wanted to make sure that we were keeping it. And then, not to go back to the GAN limits, but I think, I just wanted to clarify, I think you said at our last meeting that with the whole borrowing, us being generous with the state of California, because they are generous with us and grants and such, if we did get into a situation where we were approaching our limit, that we could pull some of that money back? Is that true?
That is, that is correct. So what they've asked us to do is report if that four-point-nine million dollars would cause us to exceed our limit, essentially, they'll take it back. And they did do that for, I had to go back and recalculate for the year 21-22, and we were higher, because that was actually a very good revenue year for us, and they actually did reduce the amount that they asked us to take responsibility for.
Okay, thank you. That was all. I appreciate your work.
All right, look at this end. Other questions?
Well, I was going to ask that same thing about the Home Key program that you just mentioned. Not too sure if I totally understand what you've said to Stacy about it.
So basically, what I said is that the state is asking us to take on that responsibility for that expenditure, but they also have provided that if it would cause us to exceed our limit and violate the GAN limit, we have the ability to ask them to remove it or reduce it. So they're going to help us make sure that we don't end up exceeding our limit just because we're covering them. Does that make sense?
So you're actually saying that we are only allowed to have so much money as far as the state's concerned, and if we get too much money from the state, then we have to balance it out and send some back?
Of their money.
Of their money.
Of their money. And we would, if outside of that, if we exceeded our GAN limit, we technically could potentially have to get money back or reduce our revenues.
Okay, because, you know, I know that we're thinking about what's going to happen at the federal level as they claw back money, so I didn't know if this was a term that would be used for... So I didn't know if this was a term that would be used for this too, clawback.
It's kind of the opposite. It's giving us money and then basically making us take the bad side of it too.
So just to clarify, on page 262, you have a list of the ARPA funds. These are the programs that we need to be concerned for long-term, you know, sustainability. I'm really relieved to hear that we will be funding the juvenile diversion program, but things like the Community Ambassador Program, refunding the staff positions that have been frozen during the pandemic, is that something that we're going to need to look at for long-term funding? The Arcade Economic Recovery, which says multi-year, will they just stop? Or I'm excited to hear, and I know I just asked a whole bunch of questions, but this new system can help us pick and choose and prioritize programs in real time by, you know, adding in what is it going to look like here, what, you know, what kind of deficits? That was a whole bunch. I'm sorry. I'll stop.
So yes, the first, the first answer is yes. These have limited funding. It's one-time funding. I know that when the council originally did the allocation, some of these things were for up to three years. Some are just going to start running out next year. So that is certainly, if you want to continue those programs, we probably have to find an additional revenue source. So that's the answer one. The answer, and I'll make sure I try to hit those, whether or not the new program would allow you to make decisions in real time. It will be probably as close as we can get to that, and I will be very honest, I've seen it in practice. How much I can sit up here and change numbers and we make decisions, well, that I'm not going to make any promises for yet, but it could be that you say, I want to see what this looks like, and I come back at the next meeting. That I can give you. Does that answer all your questions?
It did. Well, no, I have one more. And this really isn't a budget question, but I guess I'm just wondering, when we adopt the second resolution, does that include other things other than the budget? So for example, on packet page 98, we have an organizational chart, which doesn't really have anything with the budget, but it was part of our budget packet that you put together for us. And I just ask, I'm wondering if we might put that on a future agenda. It looks quite different than our prior City of Arcata organizational chart in 2018 and 19, and then we have more updated in 23, 24. And it's probably just been omitted by mistake, but I noticed on our most recent organizational chart, we don't even have our committees, commissions, or boards on there. And then also to say that I'm really glad that we still have the Arcata community on top, but it looks like the hierarchy has changed with city council, our city attorney, our city manager. And it might be just like how it's been presented on there, but I just want to make sure we're not approving this new organizational. I don't even know when that happened or when that changed, but if we could possibly put that forward on another agenda to look at it or?
There's been no changes in the city's hierarchical structure. There's been no recent changes in our organizational structure. So if there's a way to visualize that differently for you, I'm happy to talk with you about that.
Okay. It's actually entirely gone, our committees and commissions. They're no longer, I have some copies here for everyone if you want to look at it.
And I will be very honest that I took what was there, and because I'm new, I'm not sure I would have necessarily known if there were changes.
It was probably just a mistake or an admission.
It wasn't intentional if we left somebody out, but that's something I think we can certainly at some point.
But it just looks to the person who's looking at it side by side, which is what I put together, that there was some very big changes, including no longer having our committee and commissions as part of our organizational chart.
I think we'd be lucky if we didn't. I mean, we have so many committees and committees and commissions that, and they take a great deal of staff time. And I think that not having them listed, if they were listed, you should know who is the staff person for each one.
Well, I guess my big concern is in the organizational chart, it's somebody, it was always included. It goes the City Arcata Community, the Arcata City Council, and then right below that, we have our commission boards and committees. And then below that, we have, of course, our city manager and city attorney. But in the new one, we don't have them at all, which means, you know, I mean, as a former planning commissioner, I'm wondering like, why are these folks there if they're not included in the decision-making process or even in our organizational chart?
And this is the one we had last year, so it wasn't a change that was recent, but it certainly obviously happened at some point.
And I'll just add, like, this is a visualization. I mean, I'm pretty sure like our MUNI code outlines exactly how, you know, the commission and committees are founded and how they report and et cetera. And so like, even though this is a visualization, it is in line with the MUNI code.
The constituent was really concerned about like, when did that happen? And when did that change? And why are you changing the whole hierarchy? And what happened to the commissions and committees? Do they no longer have input? So I just brought it forth.
Yeah, just to be clear, no change.
Okay.
But it seems like we dropped a box, and we're happy to put that back in.
Okay, and we can fix the representation so that it looks good for the communities so that they can understand that it has not changed. Thanks.
All right. Any other budget questions or comments before we open it up to the public? All right, so we will now open our budget public comment hearing, so take it away.
Hi. Hello. My name is Joanne McCary. And I really appreciate Tabitha Miller's presentation. It's a lot. I get confused by numbers, a lot of them, and I get confused by large amounts of money. I totally appreciate the need to do what we're doing for the pension. I just want to share with the council and staff because the CALPERS, which is, I guess, the part, the agency that we feed the funds into, there's a current statewide effort to, and a state bill, I think, to deal with fossil fuel investment. And I think it's something that the staff, who is benefiting by this pension plan, needs to have an awareness that currently there is no fossil fuel divestment protocol in the CALPERS, and there's efforts to be made to insist upon that. So I just kind of put it out there because it's a lot of money. Staff deserves their pensions, and we deserve to provide it in a safe and guaranteed way. But we are a climate-focused community, hopefully, and fossil fuels, and investing in them is not where we want to go. So I'm just sort of saying that as an aside to this whole budget issue, but because it's a lot of money, I'm concerned about where we're putting, where CALPERS is putting it.
Thank you, Joanne.
Good evening. Patricia Cumbianica. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but since Kimberly White brought up the organizational chart, I've spoken about the organizational chart in the past, and I did a deep dive in our website and never found the new version. It's always been the older, original version that lists community on the top, the council and the committees. And I think there's a lot of feeling in the public right now that the committees are being bypassed, and their, their input isn't being really considered and brought into the decision-making as much as it has been in the past and should be. And of course, the community members are feeling that they haven't been heard in some of these decisions. So I, like I said before, I think we're reading, you know, I always thought that the city was reading the organizational chart upside down, and now I'm kind of disheartened to hear that they took out the committees because they really put so much time and effort and their expertise into running our city that staff should really be paying attention to their recommendations and valuing their time that they volunteer to the city. So anyways, thank you. Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner White.
Council member. Thank you, Patricia.
Good evening. In the PDF, there is a section about the Phase 1 wastewater treatment plant. It says 52.5 million dollars. That's what you approved back in October, but our financial director has, I think it's been two or three times, has informed you it's 62 million. So the question is still out there that, I mean, I'm starting to think there's something desperately wrong here that you can't answer this question, what happened to 10 million dollars? I mean, the last meeting, you were each as individuals coming up with different sections of the budget that you wanted to question, so why hasn't anybody answered this one? I'd also say that the Phase 1, clearly in the document says that you're basically, you're informing the public that you're charging the 8% increase in the waste and water, and that fee is for Phase 1, 2, and 3. I didn't even know there was a Phase 3 of the wastewater treatment plant. But then, obviously, you probably spent quite a bit of time about CALPERS and then how you were going to take money from water, waste, general fund, and supplement that. So you have two competing interests there, and there was a document that was presented to the city. And so I wonder what your answer is to that. So it's, there's a lot of questions about that, about the wastewater treatment plant. You've gotten a grant, and you're basically a year or two out from that study. And I think what was interesting is your organization chart, which I think a couple of people have quoted, but the public's supposed to be on top, and it doesn't feel like the public is in charge of the process in any way. And we can see that with the Planning Commission. Basically, we start a half an hour early now. We call it special sessions. All the input from the public from, I mean, a very important subject matters, the general plan update, gateway, no comments are happening. I don't know whether this is like the Mother Russia approach or whether this is just stupidity, but it's like you're kind of like not getting the information you need from the public to make this all legal. And I think last session, they finally realized we need to go back to regular sessions, but unfortunately, the Planning Commission has voted that won't start until July when it's all over with. So I don't think that's going to be legitimate.
All right. Any more comments on the budget, things that are in the budget, online perhaps, if there's nobody in here?
Just going to see if our finance director, I know I saw an email earlier explaining the wastewater treatment plant question to Mr. Daggett, so I thought I'd just ask that.
And I apologize if you didn't, Mr. Daggett, if you didn't get that, it was sent this afternoon because you have brought that question up. And there, there is, there was back in October, I think it was a 54, and I'm doing this off of memory here, a little more than 54 million dollar contract that was signed with wall and construction, and that was for construction. But there's an additional, several additional contracts plus additional amounts that have been set aside for other costs. There's 2.9 million dollars for design. That's in addition to that. Another 1.9 million dollars for construction management. There's some oversight of some environmental issues with it, and there will likely be some additional costs. But I do know that we have an agreement with the state for reimbursement up to a little over 64 million dollars, which is based on an estimate of the project being at over 65 million. So there are different numbers, and I understand the complexity. The other piece of this that makes it very complex is that none of that gets budgeted all in the same year. So on top of it, that is, it's multiple years, multiple phases. But the current cost is around 65 million dollars, and I'm happy to walk through any of those details if you want to.
Thank you, Tabitha. All right, and there were no Zoom public comments on the budget this evening. All right, I will take it back to the council for any follow-up questions or a motion, and Meredith unmuted her mic first.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 223-55, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata, adopting the fiscal year 2023-24 appropriations limit, and adopt Resolution Number 223-57, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata, adopting the annual budget for fiscal year 23-24.
I will second that.
All right, so we have a motion, a second on the table. Are there any? I saw there was a thought here, and perhaps any other last minute thoughts or questions?
Yeah, I, bear with me. This is my first time doing a budget. So on page 82, we have our population, and it shows, you know, out of all of Humboldt County, we've increased by 4%. And I remember the number from Karen, it's, is it like 200 per increase? So this is like, we're growing at, what, two and a half to three times faster than we have in the past? And so I'm just thinking about our budget, you know, more people, more costs. And so I'm glad we're in great shape now, and I appreciate your candidness of we're going to have to tighten our belts or come up with some ways to sustain these programs. But then looking at this kind of staggering population growth, I am a little bit taken aback about what that's going to look like down the road. Just putting that out there.
Well, I think the good news is with those additional expenses that we get, we will also get additional spending and fees that should hopefully, hopefully balance it out.
I appreciate that perception. Thank you. I'm like, oh, no. Yeah, and as I said, this is my first time, so I'm asking questions because I'm trying to learn and understand what this is going to look like beyond this particular fiscal year.
And that is interesting. It's a little over 4%, and it's actually based on the state estimated those and provide those for us. But we were the only incorporated or unincorporated area in the county that had an increase in population. The rest of the cities, and even in the unincorporated area, all decreased in population. So it is an interesting.
That that was what was kind of like, wow, okay, something's going on here. And of course, we know that Cal Poly Humboldt is expanding, and that's going to obviously affect this as well. But just with everybody else decreasing and we're increasing, and not just a little, rather significantly, just thinking about what that will look like beyond this fiscal year. But as I have been reassured by Stacy, it's all going to work out.
Why did I guarantee that? But I did, I did offer it. But one thing, I don't know if this will help or hurt, but that 4% is a, it's a state estimate. And for anybody that really does a deep dive into housing and the arena numbers and all of that, I think that that's not the most accurate. It could definitely be higher than that.
And I think the other thing we have to, I mean, it's hard to see the buildings, but we do have new apartments, new buildings go on here and there throughout Arcata, and some of them are tucked away, so you don't notice them. But I think we have been adding very slowly and incrementally more additional housing units in Arcata. So, and I think in, hopefully in the future, we're going to be able to even have more. And so that's one of the things that I worry about.
And one more piece before we maybe call for a vote. But like Tabitha was saying, and like we talked about last meeting, also having our transaction and use and looking at a possible tax measure of, again, a ways to bring in additional revenue because we know that there are things that we want to fund and that we are growing and that we are going to need to bring in more revenue if we're going to be able to provide services to our community at the level that, you know, people expect, so.
What does that look like? Will we have a study session possibly with them?
We've asked the committee, the 2-TAC committee, to actually sort of take the initial review of that, and then they would come back and make recommendations, and to you is kind of what we foresee happening there.
Thank you.
And I'll take a little bit of time too, because they have a lot to absorb and to look at because they haven't met in quite some time.
But before things are ready to go on the ballot, all right. If there aren't any more questions or comments, we had a motion and a second, so we'll call the question and take a vote on that. So all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that goes unanimously. So thank you, everybody, and thank you, Director Tabitha Miller, for doing an excellent job with the budget and making it very clear for all of us. We all appreciate it. All right, we're buzzing right by new business. There's no new business. So that takes us into oral and written communications. So again, the city appreciates your public input, and this time is provided to address the council on items that are not on the agenda pursuant to the Brown Act. The council cannot discuss or take actions on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. And at the end of oral communications, we may respond to statements, and supported requests that require council action will be set for a future agenda or recommended to staff. So you will be limited to three minutes, and if you are to three minutes, and if you are here in person and want to give public comment, please line up behind the podium now. And if you are on Zoom, raise that Zoom hand, or if you're on your phone, press star nine. Again, you have three minutes. Come up to the podium. There you are.
Hi, James Becker, here to just speak a little bit on the Gateway draft that's soon to have some released Form-Based Code in the rough draft presented to you. We're going on 18 months since the release of the Gateway draft. At that time, we were promised meaningful engagements where the community voice would be weighted into the draft, along with recommendations from committee and commission members. Fast forward to one meeting before the Planning Commission presents their rendition of Form-Based Code draft to council and commu- to council, and community input and commission recommendations are presently selectively being filed away as non-comporting. Solar shadowing remedies generated through Form-Based Code engagements have been disregarded by the Planning Commission, the same commissioners who participated in generating the information that was contributed to the drafts proposed by Ben Noble. Recommendations from the TSC, the Transportation Safety Committee, on L Street to be a linear park and to abandon the couplet continue to be treated as non-comporting. This decision is being made unilaterally by the Community Development Department. Within the opening paragraph of the Brown Act, it states, "The people of this state do not yield their sovereignty to agencies which serve them. The people in delegated authority do not give the public servants their rights to decide what is good for people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed, so they may retain control over the instruments they have created." I hope this does apply to the Community Development Director, that he's not immune to at least the standards set by the Brown Act, if not the law. Presently, the petition for L Street linear park is up to 75, 757 signers. I appeal to the council for the designation of L Street corridor as a linear park, because I honestly feel presently the Community Development Department continues to throw sticks in the spokes of our efforts. Thank you for considering that, and I will hope that's something you can look forward to discussing at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Trying to figure out who else wants to speak. My name's Joanne McGary, and I want to reiterate what I said earlier today. I brought the Redwood Peace and Justice Center sign. It's a historical item that our city should be very proud that we had such a place in the past, doing really wonderful work. It would be nice for us to have a place like that in the future, in the near future. So if anybody wants to talk to me about what we could do with the city involved and other organizations, that would be great. I did send an email a few weeks ago involving my concern about the city still using gas-powered landscaping tools, and trying to figure out when are we going to transition to a fossil-fuel-free community in regards to cutting grass and trimming hedges and other things that can be done differently, because when we didn't have such a thing back in the olden days, what did they do? And maybe we need to get creative again, because the climate reality is such that we're globally in really deep, urgent emergency situation. And I would love the city to declare a climate emergency. I'd love the city to just get on board and yell out loud all the great things they're doing to adapt and mitigate this climate crisis that we're facing. It's not coming down the road. It's been here for a while, and it's just getting worse. So that's one of my concerns. But before we can even deal with this climate thing, we need to deal with the unhoused and the vulnerable people in our community. And I wrote to you in my last email about consideration of a task force coming together really soon, so that before winter comes, we can have something really set up to deal with the crisis that we have on the plaza up in Valley West, out in the bushes on the marsh, and out at Mad River at Carlson Park. I'm willing to participate in such a task force. I think it's really, really important. I'm really concerned that we've spent a lot of money, and things are still not great. And I think we can get to get, put our heads together and figure out something that will really, really work for our community. And in that vein, I think it's really important that we have organizations that have received a lot of funds from our city to come forward and make a presentation, like the different committees do. And so I'm asking that, we actually ask Arcata House Partnership to come and make a formal public presentation here to the city, and for people to understand what they're willing and able to do, and capable of doing, and what they want to do in the future, and what, what kind of help they need. So, thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Patricia Cambianica, I'm gonna cede my time to Fred Wise.
Yes, thank you. I want to say, I know that I often speak against David Loy. He's written a lot of good stuff that gets buried in the staff reports on arcataone.com or arcataone.com/council. I've uncovered a lot of the staff report writings, and you can read them there. There is a really good description, yes, of the density bonus laws, and I, this morning, I put up a community benefits program. You remember how excited we were about the 3D modeling, and we were excited that we were awaiting that. That came and disappeared. Now would be a great time. It would be helpful to you and to us to look at that in terms of Form-Based Code. The, on March 1st here, we were promised inclusionary zoning. I urge you to read the article on arcataone.com about inclusionary zoning. What's there now? It just came in with the Form-Based Code. It doesn't resemble at all what inclusionary zoning is supposed to do. What's proposed is not really inclusionary zoning. I put up an article yesterday. It's gotten close to 100 views already on that. What I want to talk about is something that was in the staff report regarding affordable housing and homeownership opportunities, which, as you know, are big themes for me. On May 9th, David wrote about homeownership opportunities. There's three paragraphs. I find it very dense, so I wrote an article about them. And I want to tell you what he's proposed. I have a high regard for David in lots of things he does, but not in terms of his grasp of economics of home building. He has three paragraphs. First paragraph, he says, "We will have homeownership opportunities. Rents will fall. Houses will not be good investments, and owners will want to sell those rental houses." He speaks also with the student housing market. It says that "the cost of renting a new apartment will be comparable to renting a bedroom in a single-family home." I don't think that's ever going to happen. I think houses may be sold, but not for those reasons. The second paragraph, he says that the community benefit program will give points to building condos. That would be good if it were true. The, the community benefit program, as it stands now, gives four points for building this all condos, two points for building this 20% to 80% condos. You can get the same two points for making a 10-foot by 10-foot community garden. So there's no real incentive for builders from that to build. The third point he makes is the rezoning, that by rezoning parcels that are now industrial limited to residential, it'll open up a lot of opportunities for single-family homes. There's 189 parcels, give or take a few. In the Gateway Zone, there's about 101 parcels that are quarter acre or less, in other words, that don't lend themselves to multi-story building. The, by rezoning these small parcels that are currently zoned industrial limited, then in theory, there'll be opportunities for single-family homes and townhouses. So I looked it up. There is exactly one vacant parcel that could be rezoned from industrial limited to residential, that would afford a home buying, home, you know, ownership opportunity. That parcel is the parking lot for Eureka Glass to use for to park their trucks. I think it's not likely that that's gonna be given up. In other words, these homeownership opportunities that are described are not valid. The, I spoke to the council, or the commission, rather, at the very beginning, and I said, "We have to think outside the box. Any normal way of doing homeownership opportunities is just not gonna work, unfortunately." I don't mean be doom and gloom, but we have to come up with something new and different, because the standard ways aren't happening. When I spoke earlier, I may have misspoken, I want to correct something. What I was talking about is a suggestion that's in the non-comporting table, that the Creamery District be treated as a single district in the Gateway area. Right now, it's split among three different Gateway Zones. That suggestion is listed as showing as a public, coming from a public member. It actually came from the Arcata Playhouse Group, signed by 23 citizens, including an architect, and was also suggested and promoted by the then-current, or then-chair, Julie Vasseid Elcock. The document says, the staff recommendation, is that these requirements will be conveyed in the Form-Based Code instead of developing a new district. That has not happened. There's still a request for a new district for, specifically for the Creamery area. Again, I urge you to look at arcata, arcataone.com, articles about inclusionary zoning, about homeownership opportunities, about affordable housing. I always appreciate what you do, but there's, we have a big task ahead of us with the draft coming your way. I look forward to your comments on that. Thanks.
Thank you, Fred.
The noise element is a subject matter that's dear to my heart, that you've gotten a lot of information on in the last year and a half. It's gone to the council, it's gone to the city manager, it's gone to David. And basically, if I gotta spell it out again, we have a large percentage of vehicles that are changing their emissions on their cars to sound like F-16s. And if you happen to be living on some of these streets, you're, you're woken up at all very awkward times of the night, early mornings. I've given you information about studies, you know, based in Europe, because they're more concerned than the US. But the US is catching up, and it's quite a bit of studies of how premature deaths and people shaving off maybe 10 years. And it's pretty disappointing to see no action. I've been very patient with, to see something that's gonna be done, and absolutely nothing's been done. And what really pissed me off, this last Planning Commission meeting, was that basically the sound, the noise element and the ARMA element, they were not going to have time to even look at this. So, I mean, this is just unacceptable. And I guess they're blaming it on this, this timeframe that just don't have time to take care of this. So I've basically have done everything, when I read the law, that I'm supposed to do. I've gone to all the different departments, I've asked for your help, and I've gotten nothing. So the next step, I guess, after, you know, I've been giving you time, because I know how complicated government is, but seeing what the, the hands that were shown to me by the Planning Commission, my, my only choice is to go to the state of California. So I will inform the state of California the situation, and then you'll have to deal with them from the standpoint, I don't know how it's gonna work out. Unfortunately, that's the way it's gonna go, because I'm not the only one. Maybe I'm the person that shows up and is complaining about it. But there's a lot of people that I've talked to, and they say, "Yeah, I've changed my bedroom. I'm not on the front of the house. I go to the back. Yeah, I have to do all these things." They're, they're not even aware there's, there's a law that was, you know, basically passed by two governors, Brown and Newsom, about this whole subject matter. So it isn't just Arcata, it's throughout the whole state of California, and the legislative body and two governors felt that it was pretty serious, and they, they passed it. So what happened was cities that jumped on this right away and enforced it, you know, they got it under control, because the message was sent out to these car enthusiasts that they can't do this. And so unfortunately, we let it get out of control. So that's where we're at.
All right, thank you. Any more comment in here? All right, take it to Zoom.
All right, our first is a call-in user. Go ahead, call-in user.
Good morning. I'm, good evening. Hello?
I think we are. Hold on, call-in user. Go ahead. Yep, we can hear you now.
Oh, good, okay. My name is Lisa Pelletier. I'm calling in in solidarity with Central del Pueblo, and I visited the Sanctuary Garden on that Saturday, right after, after the vandalism. It was during the Oyster Fest, and I saw Councilmember Kimberly White there, and I heard that other council members had shown up the following Wednesday. And I just want to thank you. I want to thank you for showing up, because I think that's really important. And I also want to thank you for allocating $5,000 to set up a security system. It's extremely important, and I think the city should make it a priority to, to find out who this individual is who is committing these crimes, and to bring him to account. And, you know, we, many of us worked very hard on the sanctuary, to pass the sanctuary initiative, and this makes mockery of it. We, we got a sanctuary, we got the city council to pass the sanctuary ordinance, and then we got the county to pass the sanctuary ordinance. But it, it means nothing if these acts are allowed to continue, and, and community members are being terrorized. So I just urge you to make this, you know, a very, to, to get the police department to, to do everything in their power to catch this person and bring them to account, and to support the people in our community who are, you know, living in fear and afraid to go to the garden. It's, it's just not right. So thank you for your efforts, and we have to do better. We all have to do better as a community. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Lisa. All right, our next speaker is Sheri. Go ahead, Sheri.
Hi, good evening. Here are some quotes from the Transportation Safety Committee's input given at their May 16, 2023 meeting regarding the K and L couplet. This committee opposes the L Street couplet and would like to see any reference to it removed. Removal of couplet in favor of a linear park through the L Street corridor. Eliminate all references to the K and L Street couplet. Despite the Transportation Safety Committee's numerous recommendations, staff continues to push the K and L couplet. The Community Development Director stated that he would update the draft general plan with all committee recommendations except for their recommendation against the couplet. My question is, do city committee guidelines state that it is acceptable for the Community Development Director to censor the committees, or decide what committee input should be elevated to the Planning Commission and City Council? When questioned about this, the city manager said, "The public's recourse is to bring it to the city council when you review the draft gateway and draft general plan update." So the answer to my question is apparently yes. In opposition to the Brown Act, the Community Development Director can censor city committees with impunity. To quote from the Brown Act, "The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know." Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any more Zoom public comments?
There is no additional Zoom comment.
All right. That takes us to council and staff reports. Staff, are there any staff updates? All right.
Can, I was just wondering, did you have any updates on the Motel Bridge housing beyond what was in the Time Standard article by any chance? The motel housing out in Valley West.
For Cal Poly.
Oh, for Cal Poly?
Yeah, yeah.
They are, my update from, from Cal Poly is that, well, we had a liaison meeting, so a couple of you were there also. They're still refining their numbers. I think we can be guaranteed that they are gonna be releasing the Comfort Inn. There is still a chance that they may be leasing another one. I don't think they will be leasing another three. So I, you know, if you asked me to guess tonight, I'd say it might just be Comfort Inn. But the truth is, they're still refining those numbers, and they're reaching out to individuals that had indicated early on a request- individuals that had indicated early on a request to assist with housing, but then have not responded again. They're still reaching out to those students before they completely release the potentials for those. But I think it will be substantially less than what we had originally thought in terms of impact.
So I may have confused things, because I did, I was reading a letter on legislation that the mayor wrote, and, and then I had been told that there will only be the Comfort Inn this year. It doesn't mean that it will only be the Comfort Inn next year. But this year, it's only the Comfort Inn, is my understanding, when I have spoken to the housing people. And I did send that out as a text message after I read the mayor's letter on legislation. So I just, so I included everybody, but not all the staff. So sorry for the rest of you out there, but I just wanted you to know that, because I've been checking on that, because I've been curious. Because it's something the visitor center has been asking, how many motels do you think you're going to have available next year? And they're very concerned about that, as far as what they can advertise. And so I did let them know that we, as far as I know, and I believe it's true, that we'll only be have the Comfort Inn. So if that helps at all, why I stirred this up, and why you're wondering.
No, no, it was in the Time Standard. I was wondering if she had any updates beyond that.
My update was yesterday, but that's a long time ago.
All right, then we will come up here to council updates. Alex, you were already giving us updates, so we'll start with you, and we'll move down this way.
One of, one of the things I've been thinking about is, and I've been asking for the housing meeting for quite some time, is about condominiums and how we can have condominiums in our communities and within the whole state for ownership within the state of California. So there is a way to actually do that, and I think that we have developers that are going to be interested in, in making that happen. And so I do see the possibility for condominiums in our future. And it's, it's a program called OCIP. It's an insurance policy held by a property owner during construction or renovation of a property, which typically covers design and virtually all liability for construction projects. So it costs them additional money, but it's still within the ballpark of having a project work where you could have condominiums. So I've been asking a lot about that. I did send that off to some of you in the housing committee. I feel like one of the other things I, I thought was a good idea is the planning, planning commission has decided to meet a half an hour earlier, so that they are able to meet with all the public comment they've been receiving. And so they're no longer going to be meeting at 6:00, they're having a special meeting at 5:30. From now on, they will meet at 5:30. So I, I think that's good. And I also, I know that we have comments all the time, you know, about houselessness, et cetera, but we have to think about how within probably, what, 18 months or so, two years, we've been able to create 140 new living units for homeless. And I think that's amazing. And to think about what Arcata House is going to be able to do in the future as far as the critical shelters, and how they've been able to create a space for that. So I think things are coming along, but of course homelessness, if you read the paper, and there was an article in it today, it's massive, all over the United States. And so we are doing well. And Arcata House is one of the premier ones providing housing and making strides, great strides, in the houselessness. So I would like to condemn, commend them for that, not condemn, commend them. I brought this up before, and I know there's a lot of concern about the traffic committee and the couplet. I think about the couplet, I think about the future, and I know how long things take. And so this couplet everyone's worried about now is probably going to be something we aren't even going to be able to see for 10 or 15 years, because of the way it goes through and the private properties that aren't available for development. So, but I, we'd like to see the traffic and safety committees combined. We have an opening on the traffic committee, or we did it our last council meeting, one, and safety committee has four members, which means they have four members needed on their committee, if you still have a seven-member committee. And I would like to have that put on the agenda, or however you'd like to handle that, Madam Mayor. But I think it's something we should look at. So you don't have to answer me, but someday. And inclusionary zoning-
We talked about it, I called you about it.
I know. But I'm, you know, lately, I've been anxious about getting things happening. So sorry to dog it, but I'm just thinking about it. And inclusionary zoning, it's definitely something that's going to happen in the future. It's just the way it is in developments, and it's happening all over California. And I think we'll be on the list, because we start with an A, and so when they have inclusionary zoning in the future, we will be the A, and Benicia will be the B. And it'll just go on down with all the other, what is there now? 400 and some odd cities in California? Maybe 430? There's a lot. Oh, it's more? Okay. Well, it's under 450, I hope. No, 475? 475, that's a lot of cities, considering how the growth has happened. So you think about that in, in the overall scheme of things, how California's grown here and there, and then these entities have decided, like McKinleyville, may become another city, and how they see the growth in an agricultural area, which is what McKinleyville was, and how it's turned into now a commercial center, et cetera, and how they will one day be a city. So we'll have eight cities in Humboldt County instead of seven. So that's the only thing. I know we are having a little problem with the postmaster in Arcata, but because of trying to figure out delivery for mail and, and you, I know that, you know that, Meredith, and I've, I've been called twice today on it, so I'm thinking, eee, gods. But I, what I tried to explain is, postmasters change, and they change almost every year in Arcata. There's always someone new. And they come in and they have different ideas and different ways they want to manage things, and they tell you different things. And then the next one doesn't have that same rule in place. So hopefully, it'll be easier in the future.
All right, always learning something new. Kimberly, please go ahead.
Okay. I will stick to council report, but since we did deviate just a little bit, I'm just going to real quick jump in with one thing. Greg, I saw on the Nextdoor app yesterday an entire thread about a resident, apparently who lives either on Spear or Alliance, he's 18, and apparently people were moved because he had the consideration to ask like, hey, is there a good time that I can have some fun? Is there a good day? But apparently, he's removed his muffler, he speeds up and down the street, and yeah, so there's a lot of people out there concerned about the noise, so I just wanted to let you know that you're not a lone wolf in that. I got to go to a climate conference, super excited, and I wanted to say to Joanne, it was jam-packed with information about climate justice and equity and resilience and a whole bunch more, but I wanted to respond to your concerns, that I do have some ideas of how we can do some things locally, how we can do some things here locally. I know that you've been talking about how we might replace the gas mower and other ways that we can, you know, act as if we are in a climate crisis, because we are. We had a ribbon cutting at The Grove, excuse me, at the West Village Studios, and they have 78 units total, and there's currently about a little over 50 that are currently occupied. It was super exciting. I did attend a homeless housing working group today and did get some updates on The Grove, received some safe parking updates so, so far. Now we're at 93 individuals that have served. I did get to volunteer at Central de Pueblo's Garden on Saturday before I went to the climate conference. Let's see, what else? CUNA, Project of Playhouse Arts, had another, their fifth, successful participatory budget project, which was at the Chamber of Commerce Visitor Center. CUNA has another upcoming participatory budget coming up at the West Village Studios, the new Home Key Project. So that's super exciting. The students, excuse me, not the students, the residents are really excited to be able to engage and let their voices be heard about improvements for beautification and community connectivity in their community. We, let's see, oh, CUNA will be doing a community barbecue for both Home Key Projects as well as Cal Poly Humboldt, however many hotels they have decided to use for their bridge housing. And so what else? Oh, I'd like to wish everyone a happy summer solstice, and I think that's all I have for now.
All right.
So can I just add one thing? It's about condominium insurance. Okay. Well, I just think we, we could take a lead or think about it as far as insurance and how that affects housing, and especially housing for homeownership in the state of California. And I'm wondering if we can't actually start to address that with our legislators about condominium insurance and how we could make that better for more ownership housing. So that's my feeling, sorry.
Okay. I feel like my, my big fun meetings are always after our council meetings, but some looking forward, because it was brought up again tonight, too. RCA will have a, an update on the Climate Action Plan at our next meeting tomorrow, and so if you are interested in learning about that from the RCA perspective, you could tune in on Zoom or come down to the Jefferson Community Center at 3:30. And then also, some really exciting updates at RCA on the Rural REN, the Resilient Energy Network, which is actually kind of like a Northern California multi-county program that RCA has kind of been chosen as the lead agency on, which is super exciting. And so hopefully, that funding is going through, and we will be working with other counties in Northern California on different energy resiliency projects, which is super exciting. And of course, it's budget season, so we're all adopting our budgets. And then Meredith and I attended the Cal Poly Liaison Meeting, just a lot of great updates on just how they are doing on their different capital improvement projects. The one exciting takeaway I had is that the Trinity Hospital Children's Center will be open by the next school year. They're looking to open that up sometime in early August, I think August 7th was the date that they gave. So it's really exciting, the first of kind of these major improvements over there coming to fruition, and what they've done with the building at the old Trinity Hospital site is just, it's beautiful and it looks great. And so that will be a wonderful space for them to use there. And I don't know if you have other things to add on that. And then the last piece I'll add, that Karen and I today attended the Equity Arcata Advisory Team Meeting, which was a long one today, while we're kind of working through some of the restructuring that Equity Arcata will be going through with some new board members, et cetera. But we did have a good discussion about how Equity Arcata can kind of act as a forum to be able to have some of these conversations about, you know, just race and hate and what we're kind of seeing come to, bubble to the surface with the Sanctuary Garden and everything in Arcata. And so hoping to work more with city manager and with the rest of that Equity Arcata team to start to have some of those kind of public forums, to be able to host these conversations and brainstorm ideas and actually be able to kind of come up with solutions that aren't just, you know, send police surveillance. And so looking forward to hopefully continuing that work with them and with Equity Arcata. So it was a really productive, exciting meeting today. And I think that's all I have.
All right, I don't have much. I just wanted to, once again, give a shout out to Arcata Main Street. They did a wonderful job with Oyster Fest. I don't remember if there was a meeting, this is the meeting after Oyster Fest, but if it hasn't been celebrated before, did an amazing job bringing Oyster Fest back to the plaza. Also remind everybody, there is a Pride March in Ferndale on Sunday. I hope everybody will come, join me and stand in solidarity with our 2S LGBTQAI+ community and show our support down in Ferndale. And if we don't remember, after this, there's no meeting in, the first meeting in July, we don't have a first meeting in July. Enjoy your summer.
It's a future meeting.
Yep, it is, it's a future.
So a couple of things, the chamber is looking for volunteers for the 4th of July Jubilee, and I can tell you, these events take lots of volunteers. There were so many people volunteering at Oyster Fest, and I know they're going to need a lot for Jubilee, so if you want to get involved, do that. And my report from HCOG is that I got to attend the groundbreaking ceremony for the Indianola Underpass, and that was very exciting, although, you know, I've only served for two and a half years on HCOG, and that is a 20-plus-year project in the making. So it's been, you know, a lot of community input and participation in that, so that will definitely make that strip of highway much safer. So that's pretty exciting. And just to end the note with a sense of humor, because I think it's rude to talk to each other with your microphone off, so hopefully you all put two and two together, that a pitcher of water and a two-and-a-half-hour meeting, I couldn't hang, so I had to, so that's what all the discussion was about. So anyways, that's it for me.
And can someone take a picture of us before we all get adjourned? Thank you.
Okay, and, and before we adjourn, Kimberly's going to share a few words about a beloved community member that we lost recently.
Yeah, I'm hoping we can do a moment of silence for Jessica McGinty, and as Mad River Union News put it, our local genius inventor and entrepreneur. She's the founder of Jessie Curl, and she did pass away recently without, not without a fight. She, initially Jessie Curl operated out of her home. North Coast Small Business Development helped her write a business plan so that she could get a loan from Arcata Economic Development Corporation to buy equipment. She moved her business out of her home in early 2000 into the current factory out in West End Road in Valley West. Soon Jessie Curl began marketing all over the world, growing a solid and loyal customer base. She made appearances from Canadian television to the Rachel Ray Show, but Jessie Curl was more about, a lot more than just hair, was also about human rights. She made donations to a long list of organizations, including Stop the Violence Campaign, Adopt a Minefield Smile Train, which provides surgery for children born with a cleft palate, and of course, our very own North Coast, North Star Quest Camp for Girls. She also hosted a weekly global grooves program on K-Hom Radio. She wrote an advice column for the North Coast Journal. And in February this year, 2023, Jessie Curl celebrated its 20th anniversary of providing its full line of hair products for people with curly hair. I'm going to end with a quote from her husband, Chris. He said, "I believe Jessie's story, Jess's story and legacy is not just about Jessie Curl, but about the people she touched and the love she gave to so many individuals. She has inspired people all over the world with her empowering trademark motto of, you have the right to remain curly."
We'll observe a, a quick moment of silence, and then adjourn in Jess McGinty's honor. Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.